And then are you able to? Okay. Is the, um... The sheriff icon?
I don't have it. It's on Matt's computer.
Oh, I see what you mean. Right. Well, you're trying to figure that out. I'll just let everybody in the commission know. So I spoke to, I notified Matt, who's our Indian County Board of Liaison, the commission voting to send the letter to DOJ. I spoke to him earlier this week. He's on parental leave until February. The main thing that he said was he wasn't opposed to the letter. He just requested if the commission would consider waiting until he appeared for the February meeting where we sent any type of letter. He was open to us agreeing on the contents of the letter today and then speaking with him in a February meeting before sending the letter. So just relaying the information that people want to discuss that option that Matt put forward. Any thoughts on that?
February meeting, the sheriff is also coming?
We haven't confirmed with the sheriff whether he's coming or not, yeah.
Meaning he hasn't responded, or?
Has anyone reached out to him on that?
I'm not sure if Gerje did or not. She's had a death in the family, so.
Oh, I see.
I'll chat with her. Did, but if she hasn't, that's well.
Okay.
Did Matt give a reasoning why we should wait until February?
The main thing for him was, well, actually it was twofold. Just him being new as the liaison to the commission and just wanting to be fully knowledgeable about what was going on. And two was, he was unclear whether the commission had the authority to send a letter in that capacity or not, or just on its own, or require some type of approval by the county board. He wasn't saying yes or no, one way or the other. He just said he wasn't sure in his view whether the commission could act to do that in such a way. There is a portion of the Human Rights Commission ordinance that mentions referring potential civil or human rights violations to federal entities that could fall under. But, you know, I would defer, Roland isn't here, but Roland's usually the source on interpretation of the ordinance. Or, and if you have any, you know, view on that?
I don't see why not. Should we not be able? But my point, my question is that if we're not to send it, that means that Matt will send it under the board and therefore we do send something?
No, it would be that we would still send it, but we would wait to discuss the letter and like the reasoning for sending the letter with Matt before we sent the letter.
No, no, I'm just saying, if you just said that if we don't have the authority.
Oh, if we don't, if we don't have the authority?
Correct. Then will then Matt step in and send it to the board's office? I mean, do you know, that is something that we need to?
That would be up to the, yeah.
So we wouldn't be writing the letter on behalf of the county. We'd be writing the letter on behalf of the Human Rights Commission.
Right.
I think it would be an abysmal process if we had to submit such a letter, which is part of our bailiwick, and we should resist strongly if he says that. And if they want to come up with a precedent or that commission's doing, that's on them, but I think that that would be terrible.
So if I can just clarify, Matt wants us to hold off on voting whether we're going to approve the letter or whether we're going to send the letter. And he stated that he wasn't sure about the circumstances of what's going on?
So he, so the main thing for him was the authority of the commission to issue a letter like this, either with or without county board approval. And the other issue was basically just saying he's new to the, as liaison to the commission. So he just would feel uncomfortable if he spoke to the commission before we did something like that. The, when I was discussing with him what we were doing tonight, he said he would, you know, he would be fine with, not that we need approval for that, but he would be fine with us voting, us voting to agree on what the contents of the letter would be. But he was just asking that the letter not be sent until he spoke to the commission.
When is Matt supposed to be back in the office from parental leave?
February. I think it's like February 1st.
First, or?
First, I think.
Okay. So I am, I'm asking because I guess the question then becomes, would it be too late if we waited for his return? I don't see any, frankly, I don't see any problem with our discussing and voting on it. I mean, it can also, to the extent that it doesn't meet the county's approval, the board's approval, then that can also, you know, we can go back to the drawing board and craft a new letter or edits it as needed, but I wouldn't.
I have a recommendation that kind of goes with that, which is, I don't know if we'll all be in agreement tonight, but if we are on the content of the letter, that at least set this meeting to discuss the letter and potentially agree to it. Let's actually vote to send the letter, but hold it in advance until our meeting on the 8th. If we need to revisit that presenting the letter, then we need to do it.
Yeah.
I think two weeks delay probably not terrible. Again, I think that the, what would be terrible is if we say we have to wait for the county board to say it's okay.
So do we have, are we okay waiting?
What are we doing?
Are we okay waiting two weeks for Matt to return back to the office? I don't, I don't imagine at this point it's going to make a huge amount of difference unless there's like some sort of, you know, statute of limitations or whatever that we have, you know, some sort of deadline we have to send it in by, but I.
So just filling Roland in real quick. So I spoke with Matt just to inform him, you know, and let him know to the rest of the county board about our vote to send the letter and, you know, tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting. So Matt spoke with me like briefly earlier this week. He's on parental leave until early February. He, he just requested that, if possible, we hold off on the sending of the letter until he meets with the commission in February. His two main concerns, and you could maybe, based on your view of the understanding of the ordinance, address one of these. His two main concerns, one, just generally being new to the position of liaison, to be familiar with the commission and the letter and purposes and discussion behind everything. And two, whether the commission had the ability to send this letter itself or whether we would need permission from the county board to do it, or just neither. There is that part of the commission that talks about referring potential complaints to the federal entities, which I would think that, you know, give that priority.
This would constitute that in any way, right?
Right, right, right. I mean, unless I'm missing something on the language that seems to me that that gives the authority.
So could I make a motion then that we have a discussion about this tonight? We make any decisions that we see fit and then, you know, wait and present that to Matt when he returns?
I was just going to ask if, if he's not sure about the authority, can he get that information and bring that to the meeting so then there isn't more delay? Because it seems like, I don't know what he's going to be coming here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I already asked him that, so, yeah.
Sorry, I'm confused about that. My understanding was that, you know, as long as he said it was okay, then we moved forward. So if, if there's not an issue of their having to approve it, we can send it anyway.
What, what's your question?
So, okay, so my understanding is we vote on it. He asks, we vote on it. We can do whatever we want, but that we wait for the approval or from the county board. We don't know whether or not, that's my understanding, that whether we need the approval or not. So if we don't need the approval, then there's nothing for us to do. If we need the approval, then, you know, waiting two weeks will not have cost us anything.
Yeah, it sounds like Matt is unsure.
Right.
We can send a letter directly without getting the county board, and he wants us to wait until he, I guess, figures that out, or that seems unknown. So that's why I was saying maybe we just.
Oh, I think, can we, can we hold him responsible then for making that, for figuring that out? So that by the time he arrives, we don't have to wait? I think now I understand what you're saying. Okay. Sorry, I was a little lost about that. So, you know, that's a good point, yeah.
So my question is, I mean, is it up to Matt as the liaison to determine what the interpretation of the statute is for what our authorities are? Or is there somebody that would be the definitive source to make that judgment of what our actual authorities are?
Well, yeah, I assume you would have to ask the attorney, the county attorney to attract the.
Right, the county attorney, yeah.
The ordinance. And at that point, we will assume authority whether we have it or not.
We would have to presume them.
There's not much, I mean, Roland, you've been here long enough. I don't know if this.
Yeah, but I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the county attorney and say whether that we can do it. Because the county attorney, it's not our attorney. The county attorney is the attorney to the board. So the county attorney is not going to give a commission opinion, legal opinion, if anything. It's going to, it's only going to give it to the board members. Because they're only the attorney, pretty much, board members. And I don't see the county attorney really wanting to be a part, pretty much, of this. I think we have, if you just read the statute and you read the statute, we can do this. It's just that, it's just a question as to whether or not you want to afford the county board member, I think, the heads up before you actually do it. I think you probably should afford the county board member the heads up before you do it. And then just sort of, because that's what Matt is essentially saying. Matt is saying, I don't know. If Matt knew, if Matt knew you couldn't do it, then he would say, no, you can't do it. Because this is not Matt's only commission. He's been board liaison for numerous other persons. Knows and thought of what can be done, what can't be done. So it's, but it's just, I think he just wants the opportunity to speak to us before we actually do it.
So here's what I recommend. I think that's a great idea. I think, I don't think we're going to lose too much by waiting for Matt to weigh in on it. And in fact, I think it would be better because I think this way we spread the responsibility. And unless it's something that is like so inflammatory that somebody would say, no, I don't, or, and/or illegal, you know, which I don't, also don't think, having read it, I don't see anything, though, that would meet that threshold. But, you know, not everyone's going to be happy about it. So this way we get to spread the responsibility, and I think that that's a plus for us. And to, and I'm sorry.
Angela.
Angela's point, I think we should, we should ask Matt to find out whether or not, you know, that's necessary and have that, you know, that answer ready to go when he, when he returns. I think it's a fair request.
So reading the statute on the powers of the commission, besides the general gather and disseminate information about discrimination, human rights problems affecting community life in Arlington County, and to refer to the appropriate state or federal agency complaints of discrimination, which are within the jurisdiction of the state or federal agency, there is a provision that says to seek with the approval of the county board through appropriate enforcement authorities, prevention and relief from violations of this chapter. So they're a little bit ambiguous as to which one we're, we're doing. We would say it's not actually the appropriate.
I got, there's people on mine.
Yeah, that's the one.
Thank you.
You should, kind of, if anyone has public comments.
Yeah, but, yeah, so I think, is there anything else that we want us to add? We can go to the public comment.
I'm blocking some, I shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
I think I'm the only person that can be seen. It's all right, no, actually, I'm okay now. Whatever.
Okay.
But I think probably everybody should be seen.
So is there any, anyone from the public that would like to?
I don't think we can see Wanda. Now we can.
So I guess that's, no, no one, okay.
The public comment?
All right. So just going back to the part of the ordinance, like I... So, yeah, there's the two ones that make it kind of ambiguous. The one is to seek with approval of the county board, yeah, enforcement of authorities. And the other one is to refer, and that doesn't include the approval of the county board, to refer complaints of discrimination which are within that jurisdiction. I mean, I would just, unless I'm missing something here, I would think that the one that says to refer to the appropriate state or federal agency complaints of discrimination which are within the jurisdiction of the state or federal agency would be more of an investigative aspect. While the previous one that says seek with the approval of the county board for appropriate enforcement authorities, prevention or relief from violations of this chapter to be more, again, of, as it says, a request of actual enforcement to provide prevention or relief. In this case, I think we're clearly in the arena of the second part, which is asking for an investigation as opposed to some type of immediate prevention or enforcement action from a federal agency, unless anybody, anyone that disagrees.
But that may be the part that Matt is most concerned about.
Yeah, and if you go back to this, if you go back in the statute to the section that deals with findings of discrimination in the commission as far as discrimination, and the commission wants to enforce it, it says you have to go to the county board, which puts it pretty much in play with that. I think that's in reference to that. That if we want to actually enforce a finding here, that we would have to go to the county board. Because then that involves going into court. Of course, the county, the county's authority to go into court.
Right, right, right.
So that kind of fits in with that.
So on his two concerns, the one about the authority of the commission, I don't know, I think it's pretty clear that you do have the authority to refer for investigation without approval from the county board. But as to a second concern, just like you were describing, the courtesy discussion or meeting before it's sent out, I would just go back to thoughts on Stefan's suggestion about approving a draft letter today, but holding the bans until that February 8th discussion with Matt. Any thoughts on that?
I think, I hear us all agreeing. I think, yeah, I don't think there's any disagreement.
Is there any motion in support of that?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and have a conversation about what we want to put in the letter and then hold it until Matt's return on, what, February 8th?
The meeting's February 8th.
And on February 8th. And we're, I'm assuming he's going to be attending that meeting, right?
He said he would attend.
Okay. And just send it at that time. I mean, we're looking at essentially about two weeks away. I don't think that's a time period that costs any concern. So, I mean, I make that motion, sorry. I shouldn't have gone on. Forgot we were doing Robert's rules. So if Sheriff Kuros responds and he can attend the February meeting, we can have both, Ed DeFrani and Sheriff Kuros here as well?
I don't, I don't think there's a reason why not. Yeah, yeah, we could have both, yeah.
But you'll be able to find out whether notice was given to him or the request was given to him?
I'll chat now. Would Sheriff Kuros's presence be, well, I guess it would be something that he would want to know about, yeah, as a courtesy.
Well, he was supposed to attend the February meeting if he accepted the meeting to answer specific questions posed.
Oh, with respect to the letter?
Part, in part.
Yeah.
Okay, some of the content, I see what you're saying. Some of the contents of the letter.
To address some of the issues with the letter.
Some of the questions, yeah, I get it.
Okay, you know, that makes sense, yeah.
So are we going to, when Sheriff comes, we're also going to address the report because I've read the report, and it is, as you said, a very technical report. It isn't really what we thought was, well, I didn't want to speak myself. It isn't really what I thought was going to be the type of investigation into. Actually, they go out of their way to say this is not an investigation into any of those deaths, even though they understand the significance of it. So it's, it really, it kind of supports what we're doing because in it, what they, what they found was deficiency. The deficiency was that the Arlington County Detention Facility does not give investigations, and they don't have it processed in place. So this kind of request for someone to investigate it kind of goes in line with the finding.
Right, and just like the report brought up things, like you mentioned, lack of training, potential overuse, what's the word, not shutdowns. When the, when there, the inmates are held in their, in their.
Locked down.
Yeah, potential overuse of lockdowns, things along those lines that could be included. But like the report says, it's forward looking, not past looking in that respect. So, yeah, I agree.
The report does, to me personally, needs to be clear that they need a lot of work. And somebody needs to step up to the plate it, give the sheriff's office or the sheriff's jail itself the funds needed to bring it up to deaths not to be happening. I mean, the lack of training, the pharmacy, how it's being run. They only have somebody there Monday to Friday from 9 to 5. What if you're having a, some type of issue later on? I mean, it just showed the lack of concern to a human person, regardless of where they're being held at. And in Arlington County, being so well off and having one of the well-to-use county donations, we should not have anybody down here, or like in a pharmacy.
Just a question of logistics. You mentioned something that's pretty important, that the pharmacy's only open from 9 to 5. And obviously, you know, life goes on beyond those hours. Do they, would they then have access to, like, say, CVS or another pharmacy? Or do they, are they restricted to only getting medications through their own internal pharmacy? How does that work?
I.
You didn't specify.
That's, that is actually, it seems like a fine point, but I think that is, that is something to be looked at.
What it made it sound to me, and written in black and white, it was that we only go through the higher provider, I don't know the name of it, and they're the ones who handle it. And they close after 5:00, so be it, they close at 5:00. But like I said, I didn't expect that report with detail, but it's just some of the issues were brought up that actually are happening in the county jail. I don't think anybody deserves that.
So returning to the motion that Fatima made, if we could maybe, could you like repeat it?
Okay. If I remember it. So, okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we continue to discuss the letter as is, make any changes or edits necessary, agree on the final version tonight, and then hold that version until we have a meeting with Matt, review it with him again at that time. And that should also, I would imagine, not preclude us from making any edit, or is this even, no, nevermind. I'm going to keep it simple, making it far more complicated than asking myself questions. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and agree on the letter, whatever we come up with tonight, we're going to hold that. And then for our meeting with Matt on February 8th. And then Matt is going to, at that time, approve it if necessary, if county board approval is necessary. And if not, then we just send it off at that time. Does that make sense? Is that okay?
That was a lot. Sorry. It's a long motion.
And you put so many edits in there that I don't think we're going to get any.
I'm sorry. That was my bad. I shouldn't have done that. You know, that was my, that was my thinking out loud, forget that.
I think something a little more simple would be, if we would consider the letter and vote to approve or not to approve the letter, but we will not send it out until after we have the meeting.
I'll entertain any motions for.
I like your motion better, it's much simpler. Let's go with that.
Motion.
Seconds?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. So with that, we can take a look at the, we will share a screen. So this is the letter with Stefan's edits. And we can, we can potentially switch back and forth on the review tab to the, to the original. But if we will have a chance to look at the original versus the edits, does anyone have any comments on, just in general, or views on suggested edits for Dan's?
I looked at the edits and I think they're great. I don't have any opposition to Stefan's edits.
I think Stefan did a good, great job.
I thought Wanda did a great job of drafting the letters. It seems easier to edit than to draft them. Thank you.
You both did a great job.
Stefan's edits were great, thank you.
Could we, could we just go through it again real quick just to make sure that we, or should we? I'm going to, can I recommend that we just read it out loud? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, do you mind, I'll, I'm happy to read it, okay. So, Dear Assistant Attorney General Clark, The Arlington County, Virginia Human Rights Commission has been made aware of potentially severe human as well as civil rights violations in the Arlington County Detention Facility, ACDF. We are concerned that those incarcerated may be at risk of death and severe harm by ACDF staff. Over the past eight years, nine people, nine people have died while in the custody of the Arlington County Sheriff's Office. One of the deaths resulted in a $10 million lawsuit against the sheriff's office, which the parties settled for $1.3 million in February 2023. The Arlington branch of the NAACP wrote a letter requesting that the Department of Justice similarly investigate the patterns and practices at the ACDF. The Arlington Branch NAACP Letter dated March 15, 2022 informed the Division of Inadequate Medical and Mental Health Care in ACDF, which had at that time resulted in seven in custody deaths. Since then, there have been two additional deaths. That request was renewed recently on December 18, 2023 by the NAACP National General Counsel. Life is the most fundamental and precious human right should not be taken simply, maybe you should say taken lightly, because, I don't know, anyway.
So simply makes more sense.
So simply, okay, I've never heard it referred, expressed that way, but we, it's not an important point. Because someone is detained at the ACDF, the sheriff and his staff have a duty to provide health care for those who are brought to the ACDF regardless of the circumstances, which resulted in their detention. Unfortunately, there remains a lack of public transparency regarding the local investigations of the civil rights deprivation of Arlington detainees and joins, and joins the NAACP Arlington Branches' request for the Civil Rights Division to bring to light any patterns and practices that are detrimental to ACDF detainees' health and life. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. We look forward to your prompt response.
Any, any, any suggestions?
Where you, where you pause, there actually should be a comma after, should not be taken, comma, simply because someone is brought, it's not taken simply, it's taken, comma, simply.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's like, thank you, that just didn't really, human, human right should not be, precious.
Should we add a comma there versus?
Fundamental and precious human right should not be taken. Oh, taken, yeah, you're right, because someone is detained, then that makes sense.
I can make the edit online, yeah, okay. Any other suggested edits, I think, I mean, it looks good, sounds good to me.
I think it does too, I had some, I had a qualification that I wanted to put, I think, in the next to last paragraph. You'll get me into the second, for personal reasons, I, something about healthcare. And I think I wanted to qualify the healthcare. Oh no, I'm sorry, it's in the paragraph, and this staff have a duty to provide healthcare. I think, I'm wondering if we should qualify that and say provide, I don't want, I want to say quality, but, quality is, is just, it's a very vague concept, to provide adequate healthcare or appropriate healthcare. I mean, healthcare could just mean giving somebody aspirants too, I mean, qualify it and make sure that, that would be the only change I have.
Provide all forms of healthcare, I mean, where, do I need to be pointed or?
I, I just think it would make it stronger, I mean, we could send it like that too, I'm not sure that anybody would attention to it, but I think if we provided something that qualified it indicating that, you know, I would say provide appropriate healthcare.
Any thoughts on that?
Just a question, should we put in the letter anything about the Human Rights Commission's background? Maybe quoting a part of the code, county code? Talks about the human rights aspect or is that not?
Any thoughts on adding more to the letter, just a background on the commission?
On the commission, I was, I have a point regarding this situation that is going on.
It's in terms of the line. I'm wondering if we might want to put, like, just sort of maybe one paragraph blurb about the mission of the Human Rights Commission and just how that is an enclosure as part of our letter, just as a background thing, so they know who we are, why we exist, and why they're getting this letter from us. I think that might help, I'm not sure that putting in the body of the letter would. I, I'm, I'm concerned it might dilute our message.
Yeah, I'm looking at it and seeing if there'd be a point to be able to put it that wouldn't dilute the message. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think, I would assume that they're familiar with the state and local Human Rights Commissions already. That wouldn't necessarily need to explain what, what we are.
Or we can put, like, as a footnote or? I, I think we should add an additional, just add an additional page and say at the bottom, you know, attach, attachment, you know, Human Rights Commission, mission, and then, so they can read that. That'll give them a little more context.
Or, I mean, the footnote doesn't make sense to me, like, in the, right, like, we, in the very opening, the Arlington County Human Rights Commission, ex commission, put a footnote just of that.
Uh-huh. Would that give us enough space to explain what it is, or do you think we might want to give up?
For definition, why?
Yeah, either one, I think.
It looks like there would be enough space.
Like, two lines, three lines?
Even more, honestly, there's a lot of space in the bottom.
I have a question about if the sheriff were to come next meeting. When he was gonna come prior to, we had questions prepared, right? Do we need to review those questions? Are they still the same with any changes with the letter? Are we informing him of the letter? Because I know at that point we were still kind of deciding on the letters, anything has to be reviewed in that regard?
I don't, for the people who put together the questions, do you all think there's a need to review the questions or update the questions in any way?
At this, no, I don't, I think the questions are.
Well, some of them, we didn't, hadn't seen the audit.
That's true.
So they, those ones.
Could be relevant now, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
I mean, like, did any NIC recommendations relate to changes in policies or procedures? Know that from reading it, but we can ask him if so, what were they, what have they, they've been implemented? But we have the report, so the first three questions seem to be changed, I think.
Right. So just a reminder, since it's not in front of everyone, the first question was, what were the critical findings of the NIC audit? Why have the findings of the audit not been shared with the public? As Sheriff Arthur had previously agreed to. Second one being, did any of the NIC findings relate to the safety and well-being of those in custody? If so, what were they? And the third one being, did any NIC recommendations relate to changes in policies and procedures with regard to detention facility operations? And if so, what were they and have they been implemented? And as just mentioned, we have a copy of the reports, those, those questions probably aren't necessary, unless you want to change them to follow up on.
Like, the first one is, we could say, why was the report not disseminated?
Right, right.
We had, like, I, I don't know if we're considered the public, but it wasn't until, it came in in September of '22? Or November of '22?
October.
October of '22, so why was it not public until, if, if it's now public because of us, then why?
Right, right, right.
Or are you saying that that type of report might reasonably be expected to be shared with the public? And because it wasn't, it raises some eyebrows?
Right, when, when Sheriff Arthur spoke to us, she said, my reaction is, she said that it was gonna be shared publicly.
So?
It wasn't, there was the thing in March of '23 with the board, that wasn't really a public dissemination. It wasn't, I don't know if them giving it to us now is a public dissemination, but.
So effectively, there was a six-month lag between when they said it was, when it came out and when it?
Before anybody saw it.
Before anybody saw it, yeah.
So before we move on to the questions, we can, we can go and change up the questions. Let's see if we can finish up the letter. So we can, again, I, I've sent in a footnote, any suggestions on what that, on what that footnote says? Or we don't necessarily have to do that, some, because we're, we're just talking about a statement saying what the, what the commission does, that could just be something typed up later and then, and then inserted in. But any, any suggestions on what that should say?
You can just add, if you want, to let a footnote, just one sentence or two sentences about just what the Human Rights Commission is.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I mean, I can add that in and just disseminate to everyone through email. I don't think that should be too much of a controversial text, okay.
So we're gonna put that as a footnote, right?
Mm-hmm, we'll put it as a footnote, so we'll just be at the bottom as a footnote. Any other suggested edits?
I think it's pretty strong, I think it's concise.
Same. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the letter as is with the added, the footnote added in later by myself.
I'm going to approve the letter as is, but I need the footnote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all against? All right, motion passes, so the letter's been, the letter's been approved, I'll add that footnote in, and we can, before we adjourn, move on to those questions.
One typographical thing, when I printed that, the fourth paragraph, it looked like the, regardless of circus, has this comma, which resulted in detention and someone home. I missed the comma and track changes.
I'm just gonna pick up the comma there, I can't see.
Yeah, that's a period.
Oh, is it, okay, I can't see, I think that doesn't, that's what I thought, it looked, that's all in here, it was, it was too far away for me to see. Um.
Oh, yeah, that became a period.
The other thing is, why isn't that on the same line, it looks like?
Yeah, it was. Because that was a, yeah, okay, all right, I've added that. Okay, so just moving on to the, the.
But, 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 just a quick question, and one of, I was trying to get access to my thinking out loud, which is that if we have any other changes, if we look at it again and say, oh, yeah, you know what? We shouldn't have added this, or, you know, something else comes up in the interim where we decide that it, that should be added, that can of course be done, but how would that actually, can we do that? If, if, I think I asked this question before, if we as a board decide, can we make decisions in email? And if, as long as those decisions are unanimous, we can, okay.
No, the public, yeah, the public.
The public, okay, got it, okay. Okay, you answered my questions.
So, so moving on to the, to the questions for the sheriff. So the first question originally was about the release of the report. So any suggestions on, if we change that to a question about why the report wasn't released until the commission requested it? Any, any suggestions on how to word that?
What was it, what was the question with that?
The question that originally was, no, let me, just leave it. It was, what were the critical findings? But the part that was key says, why have the findings of the audit not been shared with the public? The sheriff Arthur had previously agreed to, I mean, I could just simply change to why weren't, just change the tense, the findings of the audit shared with the public until, you know, that's, yeah.
But it's a different thing as, in your mind, what were the critical findings of the, of the report? I mean, it's 45 pages, what was your takeaway?
Right, we can have that, okay, I saw it, so change, so have any questions saying why weren't the findings of the audit shared with the public until the commission requested it? And? And what were, what, what do you believe are the critical findings of the report?
Can I ask you something, Stephen, enlightened in fact that, that we now have the report itself, do we really need the sheriff to tell us what were the critical findings?
Well.
Because the document speaks for itself.
Do you think, I haven't spent enough time with it and will before then, but it's 45 pages. Do you think all the recommendations are of equal importance? Like, I'm, I'm asking what he thinks is the most important as opposed to, as opposed to all of them? And I, and I haven't spent enough time to know whether that's.
No, but, 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 but the, the person who wrote the report did, did say some of the ones which were very, very critical. But I have to go back and say, this is really a highly technical report?
Yeah.
So I'm not really sure whether the critical things are really gonna be that important to me. Because it's, it goes into things like dental care and, you know, a whole bunch of, you know, the HAP program and it, it's, my concern was dealing with the investigations with that. And it clearly was from the report, they made it very clear in the report itself that they were not gonna deal with that. Something that was not on their table, that they were gonna just deal with these technical things. But in the report itself, it does mention there's a failure to do the investigations and they understand pretty much the significance of it. So when you come back and say, what, what are the critical recommendations of this thing? Any of the critical recommendations are what they talk about with medical staff and pharmacy and pretty much all of that stuff, which to me is not critical.
I did, as part of the NIC report, there was a statement that says the sheriff and her staff should be assured that many of the recommendations will support their efforts to manage the risks of and mitigate the opportunities for death and serious injury in the ACDF. So what I would like to know is, out of all of the recommendations, what, if any, were implemented? Especially based on the recommendation from NIC stating that if these recommendations are followed, it will mitigate the opportunities of death and serious injury.
Wanda, can I ask a technical question? Which is, if you had your magic wand and everything in the report was implemented, would that fix the, the problem? Or is it kind of off base from what the real issues are?
I think that's why we're asking for DOJ investigation, because it's not simply just the technical part, looking at the patterns and practices. This clearly stated that we didn't look at any of the deaths. More so, from what I'm reading, policy and technical advice. So I would argue that we would need more, because this doesn't cover, this is just from the technical aspect, from what I'm reading, from the medical aspect, that there are other areas that the Department of Justice, who specializes in these patterns and practices, could do a more deeper dive.
See, Wanda, what I consider very, very important from this report is, if you go to page 20, where it deals with the investigation and debriefing procedures, and it says, when suicides and other critical incidents occur in the jail system, an outside, non-sheriff law enforcement agency completes the investigation. Having an outside law enforcement or other justice affiliated agency investigate these kinds of incidents, standard practice around the country. It says, at the present, there is no critical incident debriefing process established in the Arlington County Detention Facility. And I think that's very, very crucial, because I think if that was, something like this was in place and they dealt with it after the first death, investigate the second death, the third death, the fourth death, then they probably would have found what was wrong. But because they don't, don't have that in place and you've gone through eight of seven deaths, this is not in place, I think that's, that's critical. But of the report, that's really, that's, that's, that's very, very crucial. And it kind of justifies the Justice Department coming in because it's clear from this report, they don't have any means.
I might just be repetitive of what everyone said here, but just, just laying out, it seems like from what we have is we have the, the information that we do about the deaths that have occurred over the past eight, eight or so years. Some, I'll say limited in some cases, in some cases, the cause of death, as far as I saw, was not, you know, publicly released or, or determined. So we have, and in some cases, you know, it was, and then we have the technical report that's forward looking that identified some of these, like, practices and policies that were lacking. But we don't have anything that definitively connects the, the failure of those policies and practices to those deaths, whereas that, the policies and practices DOJ report would, would be looking at the potential connection between, between the two, is that right?
Is that ultimately what we want to ask the sheriff? Do we, or are we pretty much just letting him know that we don't feel or we don't see there being any practices or policies in place and that's why the letter is going? The DOJ.
I do see that the original questions that we had for the sheriff includes questions about the most, the two most recent, what were the causes of death, the two most recent inmates who had died? Has the medical examiner released their findings? So it seems like, I guess, we are, in, in. So it seems like, I guess, we are in a way asking if the sheriff is aware of the causes of death for those, not just those inmates, but as far as I saw, there were other inmates' deaths that I couldn't find anything on, on any kind of
He's aware.
Costs of death.
We're here. We're inmates that have been in there. We're here.
Oh, is it?
Yes, we're here.
I think, I think someone said, yeah, we're.
There's two inmates here.
Is there a public comment?
We're literally right here.
Are public comments allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Or do we, do we have a time at the end where they?
We can have it. As far as I understand, we can have public comment whenever we would like. Okay, yeah. Yeah, we can. Is there, is there anybody from the public who has any public comment?
Yeah, I'm Jermaine Culbreth. I was actually in Arlington County when all this happened. The staffing with the lockdowns, we are not getting our medicine. We're not getting the proper treatment. It's, it's, it's really bad. It's really bad in there.
Yeah, we're not.
And there's thousands of people that are in there are getting treated really bad. Something needs to happen. I just spent a whole year in there with lockdowns, not getting my blood pressure medicine, having to wait, not getting proper, it's, it's, it's terrible.
Thank you for giving that. Okay.
Just to piggyback off what he said. My name's Moikad Duco. I was in Arlington County detention for over 20 months, going through the same issues. My case was a pretty high profile case in which I wasn't able to reach my lawyers. I wasn't able to talk to my family. I wasn't able to get mail, get on the phone. Just the basic, the basic necessities that we needed in order to contact our people to figure out what our future would be determined, what on the outside. And as far as getting through the case, you know, it, it was, it was understaffed. Anytime they were understaffed, this easy solution was just to keep us locked in. And we had no communication with the outside world to even know what would happen or what kind of, what kind of future was out there for us. We had no idea on anything. And anytime we would ask whether or not we were allowed to utilize the phone or allowed to just have simple communication with the people on the outside, lawyers, family members to get in contact with lawyers, our family, period. It was always, oh, we can't let you out. It's a, it's a security issue. We can't tell you why. How is that an explanation when you have one of the most highest paid or the most funded jails in A- A- America, to be quite frank, definitely in the Northern Virginia region? It's not a way to solve the recidivism rate and it's not a way to solve the, the way people actually live in an environment like that. You're surrounded in an eight by eight cell, not knowing what your future holds because you're not even allowed to check or contact just, just your lawyer. That's your basic right. You're allowed to have one call, one call, at least one call a day to check in with your lawyer, if not your family. The family part, yeah, I understand that. That's a privilege, but your right is to talk to your lawyer. That is a right and we were denied that right on a constant basis, on an everyday basis. And I was there for 20 months. I can tell you that we came out a handful of times. Literally seven or eight times that we came out for full to perhaps talk to our lawyers over months and months at a time. I'm a mentor, I was a mentor in the C R U unit. Which means that like I took the leadership role in the community readiness unit. So my, my standing in there along with, along with the two brothers here that are with me today, we've experienced something that's way past inhumane. Denying our basic rights to talk to our lawyers and our family is wrong. I don't care where you are. You could be in Guantanamo Bay and you could get more calls than we've ever gotten in there.
Thank you for sharing your firsthand experience. Is John also?
Yes. Do you, do you want to hear from me or did you want to hear from the president of the N D O? He raised his hand first.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Oh, yeah.
My name, my name's John Parker. I also, I was in Arlington County Jail from May 2nd to October. I was supposed to be released on October 8th. So the same month, my leg, my left leg swollen to twice its size and I had severe pain in my leg. So I went to the desk to declare a medical emergency. So the nurse finally came upstairs on this medical emergency. This is after several minutes. All of this can be confirmed on the camera system. The nurse finally showed up and looked at my leg and told me that I just needed to go lay down. And this was, I, I heard someone mention about the five, nine to five schedule for medical. This was just before four or five o'clock on a Friday afternoon. And I was told to just go lay down, that nothing could be done for me for the whole weekend. So I'm, I, I stayed in my cell in my bed all weekend and could barely get up. The leg had swollen and I was gasping for breath. Monday morning, I finally made it to medical. The doc looked me over. Prescribed me some blood pressure medication because my blood pressure was elevated naturally. I'm gassy. So it took later that week, I believe it was Friday, the next day, before they finally sent the emergency room to which I was diagnosed blood clots in my legs and my lungs.
He's not supposed to move it.
I ain't gonna sell.
There you go.
I was going to be number 10. I stayed in the hospital for four days under constant supervision. Had to endure some mistreatment at the hospital in my own private room from a guard who came in, woke me up, lifted my mattress up off the bed so he could get the remote to watch TV for his 12 hour shift. You know, followed to the bathroom, private bathroom in this private room. Made me leave so that he could watch TV, face myself. You know, these are just a few examples. A day and a half after I came back from the hospital, Arlington County decided they was going to release me. I guess they didn't want my death on their hands. Till 45 extra days. Passed my state from correct. I wasn't supposed to be there. And I, and I can't find any legal representation for those. I can't get those 45 days back. When now my, my health situation having deteriorated as bad as it is with clots in my lungs. Man, 45 days? That's a long time for me. So much to a healthy person. So, you know. Was a mental readiness unit, as was Mr. Culbreth. So all of us were trying to do something with our lives. Trying when we could get out of our cells. So that's all I got to say for now. And any, there's, there's, I could, I can go on for even longer with the mistreatment and the lack of, of, of management at that facility. That is a horrible place on earth.
Did you have a question? Yeah, John, I have two questions for you. It was May to October of what year? And then the second one, I thought we had heard that the pharmacy closed at five on Friday, but is there no healthcare over the weekend beyond the pharmacy?
There is, there is, there's people there in medical clothing. Is there healthcare?
They're being weird.
At the jail. I mean, there, there, there's people there, but it's nice. It's a nurse that's going to wheel a little blood pressure machine up to your pod if you're lucky. And she's going to tell you to lay down. They might give you some aspirin. If you're lucky, you'll get the aspirin. It's horrible. This was on a Friday that this happened and I had to stay all weekend like this. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's ridiculous. And also to answer your first question, that was this year. So May 2nd, 2023 till November, November 22nd. I was there on a violation of probation and I served a six month sentence.
Okay. So I just have a follow up question on that. With respect to the, the pharmacy facilities or the, whatever they have to offer, you're saying that beyond, that it's only available from nine to five and they could not or would not find medication for you.
I was given no. Correct me. I was given no medication, ma'am. None. And the severe pain, I couldn't even walk.
Okay.
All it's seen on camera, all, everything that I say to you is it was recorded on video camera. So everything can be backed up.
That's concerning. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. And just now, I think there's, when I say nine to five for healthcare, I'm speaking about a doctor. I was told prior to five o'clock on this Friday, this incident occurred and I, I stumbled up to the desk. They said, well, the doctor's already gone for the day. There was just a nurse there and, and what, I, I mean, I don't even know what she's there for. You might as well, they could have kept that money and put it towards something more useful. Fix some potholes in the road or something. She, she didn't do anything for me at all. Told me to go lay down. That was the, that was the, the plan. Lay down till Monday.
Any other questions for anyone who's spoken from the public so far? If not, we can move on. Is that, is that Mike there?
Mike, I think you're next.
Okay, great. Just want to confirm you all can hear me.
Yes.
Can you speak up just a bit?
Yeah, I'll try my best. And I apologize that I'm not on camera. Can you hear me a little better now?
About the same.
Okay, hang on. I'm going to try to turn off my Bluetooth. Okay, can you hear me better now?
It's, it's, you're, you're a little.
You're low, but we can hear you.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna. Okay, I apologize. I, I'm actually in my car right now. I wanted to introduce myself as Mike Hemminger. I'm the president of the N A A C P Arlington branch. But I also serve as the, the regional vice president for the Virginia State Conference. So I'm currently in my car in Warren County, working on an issue up here. But I wanted to just briefly kind of illustrate some of the things that we've heard. You know, we all know there's been nine deaths in eight years. The death rate is accelerating. You know, people are starting to die at a faster rate than they were before. You know, the N A A C P Arlington branch, you know, we're the largest and oldest civil rights organization in America. We've had meetings and written letters to every single elected official that represents Arlington in any type of capacity. We've met with the Commonwealth attorney, of course. We've met with the Civil Rights Division at the Attorney General's office. We've had conversations with the Board of Regional Jails and Prisons. We've had conversations with folks at the Department of Justice. And none of those efforts have really stopped the deaths from occurring inside the jail. And tonight, we really have an opportunity to do something before something even more catastrophic than the deaths occurs. At N A A C P, we often say that sometimes even those with the best of intentions are unable to solve all the issues at the systemic level because the people with the lived experience aren't properly represented. Well, tonight, we're hearing directly from those closest to this issue. We're hearing directly from those that have the lived experience. I want to be clear about what we're calling on you to do tonight. We're asking you to join us in our effort to ask the Department of Justice, an independent entity, to come and help us figure out what is going on in our county detention center. That's it. We're not asking you to make any accusations. We're not asking you to accuse anyone. We're not asking you to declare negligence. What we're asking is for the highest law enforcement agency in our nation to come in and determine what is going on. And so I'll close by just saying this. If the Human Rights Commission is not the one calling for this investigation, then who is in Arlington? I implore each of you in your role as a commissioner and the influence that you have to do something, to do anything to make sure that something more catastrophic doesn't happen. The situation inside the jail, it's imminent. It's only getting worse. The conditions are inhumane. It's some of the most appalling conditions that I've ever heard of. And I hate to say this, but it's happening right here in Arlington. Let's get in front of this before we become the national example of what not to do. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Any, any questions? Any other, anyone else from the public who would like to comment?
I'd like to say. At least two.
Somebody mute their.
On, on at least two different, it might've been three, but I know for a fact it was two different occasions. You know, being in the community readiness program, we go through lots of different classes and instruction groups and stuff like that. So Sheriff Heroes, somebody in the, in the meeting tonight mentioned about having him come to one of the groups or something like that. And I, I think that that would be, I, I think that's a good idea to, because I would like for somebody or other people in the public to be able to see his response and reaction. Because I know this response and reaction that we get inside the jail. When we would have our gather, our ceremonies or we would have our graduations and the sheriff would show up and, and man, he looked great and, and he'd show up with his staff and he'd put on a nice dog and pony show and would tell, we would raise our hands. And I know Mr. Culbreth has asked him as well, sheriff, you know, we're having some problems here in the jail and can you help us with this or can we talk about this? If we meet with you just as a group to just issues and how we, maybe we can help you solve them. And the sheriff would always give that perfect response. And guess what? The sheriff never came around to talk to us. Sheriff.
If any response at all. If any response at all.
Only at our ceremonies and he was like a robot. He said just what needed to be said and it was perfect. So I can't, it's a great, be up sheriff here because I certainly would like to confront him now and I have on different clothes. That's all I have.
Thank you. And just to clarify to the, those of the public who are present, so we're going to be requesting that the sheriff appear at the next meeting, which is February 8th. We haven't got that confirmed yet or not, but we will be requesting that he. And that will be also just like this is now, you know, a public meeting where members of the public can attend and have public comment. Okay. If there's, if there are any, aren't any other.
Could you repeat the time? Could you repeat the time that, that it is?
Seven, it's, it's, every meeting is at seven o'clock, seven P M.
Seven o'clock?
Yep, seven, seven P M, February 8th.
All right. And just to let you know, before we even got to this point, we took every step, every measure to go up the ladder, up the chain, to follow, you know, proper protocol and getting something done about how the treatment has been done to us while we're in there and the inmates in there. And nothing has been done. And, and, and just to say, like, for example, Johnny just spoke on how he was not, not properly taken care of during medical, medical issues that were very, very life threatening, that really nothing was done about, instead of he was made a mockery of, which is, which is the thing in Arlington County, in Arlington County Jail, when it comes to emergency, stuff like that. You know, people's health goes, goes crazy in there. I've never had high blood pressure in my entire life. I get in there and I, all of a sudden I have high blood pressure. I'm there taking pills and, and stuff like that. Never have I ever had that in my entire life. And I, I know exactly what he's talking about and, and, and what, what we've been through there is not what any human being should be going through at all, in jail or not. So, I mean, just, just to let you guys know that, that treatment has not been, treatment has not been fair at all whatsoever.
Yes. Something has to be done because if nothing's, nothing gets done here, there will be another death. And that's not what we want to see. That's not. People don't.
At all. They don't.
I understand, I understand. If you break the law, you pay the consequences. Understood.
Right.
Understood. But you do not get treated like a caged animal. You do not. I'm home now. My dog had more freedom than I had. This is just not right. You have people upstairs on 11th floor have mental issues. You have deputies cussing them out, deputies not giving them their food when they need. They give them the food when they want to. That is not right. Unacceptable. You are a professional deputy. You need to do your job. You signed up for it, you do it. The medical staff. Duco, can you mute it in the back a little bit, brother? The medical staff, you guys are here to, to help us. I had a, my blood pressure was skyrocketing. It was one eight, what was it?
One fifty-two over eighty something.
One fifty-two over eighty something. I have all this written down. The lady came to me, she said, Mr. Colbreth, there's something wrong. She said, you are a walking heart attack right now. And I said, ma'am, I feel fine. They took me down there, a couple of minutes later, they put me on uh, 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 um, um, Lacinopril and uh, H T Z, uh, high blood pressure. There was times that I did not get my blood pressure medicine. I, I'm waiting. I'm supposed to take my blood pressure medicine at um, eight, eight to nine in the morning. When I come out of my cell and I was, I was, I worked, I worked the whole jail. I bucked the floors. I was on I W P, one of the highest jobs that you can get in Arlington County. I wa- I went outside and all that. So eight o'clock comes, my, my medicine's not there. Nine o'clock comes, medicine's not there. I'm like, hey, I need my medicine because if I take this medicine anytime after twelve o'clock, I can O D. There was times that I never got this medicine. And they would tell me, Mr. Colbreth, we can't give it to you now. We gotta give it to you tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow comes. Same situation, same situations. I was on, I was on the list for my blood pressure to be checked every day. Did they come and do it every day? No, they didn't. No, they didn't. When I asked, can you check my blood pressure, please? They had an attitude. This is your job. I said, ma'am, I'm on your list. I have high blood pressure. Please check it. No, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to put in a sick call. What do you mean, put in a sick call? I have high blood pressure. So if I die right here, it's gonna be your fault. This is your jail's fault. Something, please, you guys, please. We are begging you guys. We are begging you guys to do something. I don't want to read in the newspaper, someone else died in Arlington County Jail. Deputies are not doing their rounds when they're supposed to every thirty minutes. They're not doing it. Something needs to be done. Please, we are begging you. And these are three gentlemen that lived it. I lived a year in there. Mr. Parker lived six months. Duco lived twenty-six months, twenty-two months in there. We are living, we are living people telling you right now what's going on. And Mr., and Mr. Hemminger, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
John, were you?
Thank you, sir.
Did you have a race to add something again or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You still had a race from, you had a race from before? Okay.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks all for sharing your firsthand experiences. Uh, um, unless there's no other comments from the public, I was gonna move back on to the uh, questions for the sheriff. I'm going to approve what those questions look like.
Yeah.
Okay. So just going through uh, quickly again, uh, we have, why weren't the findings of the audit shared with the public as Sheriff Arthur had previously agreed to until the commission requested it? So we, we mentioned that one. Uh, and we are having some discussion about the question of what do you believe are the critical findings of the report? Um, is, is there, is there more that you?
No, no, I, I mean, I think that's.
I would like to ask out of, out of all the recommendations, what has been implemented?
That's the other one I have. What, if any, uh, out of all the recommendations were implemented, does any objections to that?
So we had somewhere in there, I don't know if, can we call them all, but can we find out when Sheriff Arthur spoke with Sheriff Kiroz, providing his report and whether she had started and, you know, did she just give, gave it to him and did nothing?
So basically, was there like a um, like a, like a debrief or?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and when and did anything start or was it all on Sheriff Kiroz's watch for him to read it and do it? Pretty much, did Arthur do anything or not?
Um.
But what you said, it.
And, and any, uh, any comments on that suggested question?
No, I, I just probably wouldn't respond to any of the answers.
Okay. Um, let's see. Did any, okay, so this one we already. One of the previous questions was, did any of the N I C findings relate to the safety well-being of those in custody that, that was kind of covered? Did any of the recommendations relate to changes in policies and practices that was kind of covered? But then the question is, what? Okay, th- this is slightly, slightly related to the, if any, the policies or, or if any of the recommendations were implemented, but the question was that you should have heard of what new policies, procedures, any were initiated after the in custody death um, of the, the most two recent inmates who died, who had, who had died. Uh, what specifically did you hope to accomplish with those changes? Do we need to make any changes to that question? We'll keep the question.
Just as long as we have the other question, what recommendation program?
I have that, I have that as well. So I, I mean, we have both those. What were the causes of death of Ms. uh, Old George and Mr. Gerhard? Has the medical examiner released their findings regarding the deaths? There's been no updates on that, right? There's, there's been no uh, release of information?
I have.
Has the quality assurance manager position been or going to be filled?
That's been filled.
Okay, so that one's already been addressed.
I would like to know more about their role and their responsibility. I know my understanding is they oversee the medical contract and kitchen contracts, but I would like to know badly you know, what, what are the specific duties in terms of oversight? Metrics or their, how would they measure? To help them develop the role and the role and responsibility.
So I have, what are the quality assurance managers' roles and responsibilities where there's specific duties?
Do they have any data in regards to the deaths or and or medical care of those in custody?
Okay, so not just, not just limited to the most recent, you, that's just in general, okay? What is the status of the biometric program and how is it being implemented? Is that still relevant to keep? Um, I mean, on the last one, if you object to a Department of Justice investigation. Still relevant, yeah.
So I would ask another one, which is just, can you describe what the healthcare regime is at the jail now, particularly on evenings and weekends?
Okay, and just repeating back to you, can you describe what healthcare regime is in the jail now, particularly on evenings and weekends? Any other suggested questions?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, the question is, um, did the sheriff meet with, I mean, after the issuance of the report, sheriff meet with the community representatives who participated in the virtual meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two? And I think I know what the answer is, I think. Uh, and if not, why not? And, and reason why is the list of community representatives that the person who did the audit met with is really comprehensive list of people from the W I C P, Arlington for Justice, people from the Public Defender's Office, um, and people and the acting public safety manager as well as um, other people from the ship. So I think they met with them as part of the investigation or this audit, then why did the sheriff share the results with those representatives?
So just repeating back, just so everyone hears the question, after the release of the N I C report, did the sheriff meet with the community representatives? Participated in the virtual meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two? If not, why not? Any other suggested questions?
And, and by the way, um, Walter, there was an exit briefing. But at the exit briefing, the only, the only people who were involved, as I see it, were people from the sheriff's office and actually several people from the, from Arlington County station. But no one else. So there was an exit briefing, the results, it's just that, you know, it's just all internal.
Okay, with that, we have a set of questions. Uh, as the sheriff, I think he does uh, accept an invitation for the February eighth meeting. We have the uh, approval of the contents of the letter to the DOJ, which will hold in abeyance until um, we speak with uh, Matt DeFrante, the county board liaison on February eighth. Uh, anything else anybody would like to discuss?
And if we have uh, preference, I think it'd be better to hear from the sheriff before having a discussion with that. The timing works that way.
Any uh, objections to that order?
You mean it's eating itself?
Right.
That, that would probably make sense. Okay, I would agree.
With that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Any seconds?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, thank you for being here.
No problem, guys.
Right.